And you're all set, have a good meeting.
Thank you. Alright, we return to regular session here and we're gonna take a look at our liaison position. Part of our reorganization.
You want me to?
I just wanted to make sure you knew that.
Yeah, it's not our bailout in our reorganization agenda item, but it traditionally is part of the reorganization process. So. Jeannie, I can absolutely go ahead.
I can, I can listen carefully.
I'm gonna add you right now.
Oh, you can type it in.
Yep.
Yeah.
You are all already, let's see. You're on the document now. Alright. Okay, so. Boom. Okay, so here's what we have. Alright, so I tried to do a little, just for efficiency purposes, tried to tie together what folks had reached out with areas of interest. And obviously waiting for our public discussion. So, and I left open for twenty-four, twenty-five ones that no one had really advocated for, but which is fine. Okay, so to start here, we have Advisory Committee, Janice is the current school committee representative, recognizing we'll do a little digging, hopefully at our retreat on clarity of what the role entails and encompasses. Anybody, so Janice, did you wanna stay? Does anyone have an interest in liaising?
I have no problem staying on there unless somebody else wants. It's fine.
No, okay, there you go. You're it. Alright, Select Board is kind of dictated by Chair and Vice Chair. I had left it blank, but. Now I will fill it in. I was wondering if there were committees that are not on this list that we know will eventually be part of next year and if we would add those now or add those later. Does anyone know of anything up and coming that's being created that we would, or Maria's question? It's on here.
Oh, it is, okay. And I was also wondering if the School Building Committee stays the same, or does that morph into like a school like implementation committee?
Alright, so Select Board, Financial Forecast, both Peter and Maria expressed interest in staying there. Nobody else mentioned wanting to jump in, but.
Well, I think it was partly because, at least I knew that Peter and Maria were interested in it, so I just, I think, we had to, we, we will talk about this more, but this is a really good example of where we know that this is a critical committee, so how do we engage other committee members who, I would actually love to learn more about what happens at Financial Forecast. It doesn't mean I have to be on the committee, but like, we, again, at our retreat, we can think about like, what are ways to have more conversations and letting folks know, because I think this is a really important one that we all should have at least some information about.
Sorry, Peter. I would be happy to sub you in next year, Carrie, as the alternate. I'm actually just, I'm just like, that is sort of how I think you learn, is just being there. Peter's the only voting member. And so it entailed, I don't know, five meetings, kind of in the budget season, it's not a ton. They're in the middle of the day, kind of like morning-ish, and they're kind of random what day it is. It's not a huge lift, but I do feel like just being there, being able to watch and listen was valuable, and I'd be happy to. I think Peter should stay.
No, I'm not, but I'm not saying he should come off, I'm just, it's just more listening.
No, what I, what I would, what I would say is that any of these committees or, any, we can all go, they're all public meetings, right? We just, and it's not a quorum, if three of us go, it'll only one voting member.
Yeah.
You can go as number of the public, so that's what I would probably recommend, if there's something that any one of us likes that is not a voting member, I, I, I don't think there's any issue with the quorum, because you're just there as a regular.
It's like a school building.
Yeah, but again, to your point, Carrie, those meetings aren't necessarily that hosted that publicly.
Yeah.
So unless you're on the committee, you don't really know that it's happening, so we can make it a point to communicate when they're meeting.
To help each other know when they're. Okay, let's just do that.
And again, I probably have to check on it, but I don't think there's any quorum issues going to that.
And I think too, that one's key, just obviously for us, it might not be a heavy lift, but the, the information is key and our role in it is key. And I feel like there's a few of those, so distributing that amongst the five of us in terms of like, we shouldn't have one person doing all three of the heavy ones or something. We should just conscientiously spread that, but that's just my opinion.
No, I think last year it worked well, it was, I think it was the first time we've had kind of like a bench, I would say bench strength training, so that's kind of what it served, but it takes years, like I'm still learning every time I go. So this is particularly one that is not a heavy lift, but it's a board and it's a, it's a, takes a while to understand everything that's going on. So I like the setup, and I think that it should continue that way.
Public Building Commission. Do tell.
I can stay on that.
Anyone else? Planning Board.
I haven't been on in a while, maybe somebody else would like that.
Who would like to cycle through Planning Board? Okay. Alright, Capital Planning, we had a volunteer.
Well, I mean, I, only volunteers, I feel like this is not a committee that I feel like all, all of us should take turns, and it's, just to get to know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That process.
And it's good, you get to know Jim and you get to know Nancy better, I mean, you probably already know them, but it's a whole process. Yeah, it's really just the beginning of the year and then budget season, it's peak, otherwise it's not bad.
Alright, and Maria has offered to be an alternate. I know, I feel like we've done our, done some turns there, especially Carrie last year, so. Alright, Recreation Commission, you know, I'm happy to stay on, it's not a heavy lift, but I'm also, if anyone would like to engage more with Rec Department, they're lovely people, and I highly recommend it, it's a great, great way to connect to other people who are active, volunteers in town.
What's your role on that committee?
I just give updates, they, I just sort of, I've been giving updates about the school project, it felt kind of appropriate, but they don't ask for much, I just sort of offer that out.
How often do they meet?
They meet, they try to meet monthly, but I don't think it's consistently monthly. But it's, it's a good, it's a nice community to be in. But, you know, I recommend someone, someone check it out, I, I really do, if anyone wants to connect with Nick.
I'm kind of interested. Not sure I'll be able to give regular school updates, but we'll try.
Oh, I'm putting Nick's name here, sorry. Okay, Peter.
He was like, who's Nick?
You're like, oh. Alright, not active, I don't know, I was gonna take these off. Obviously Charter, and there was the master plan years ago, we had representation there, but those are not active, SEF, probably similar to the way I feel about Recreation, it's just a nice.
Yeah.
Or, I don't know.
I enjoy it, I will honestly, I'll stay involved, SEF regardless of whether I'm officially the liaison, so if someone else would like to be the liaison. I do. I do like, what? No, she was asking if I wanted to.
I thought you were like, I do want to stay on, I see, I see. I'll keep that works if you're involved.
Yep.
Alright, Finance. I mean, this is another one, if someone else wants to jump on and learn, I feel like this even had fewer meetings, it was really just leading up to budget season.
Yeah, I was on that.
And it was sort of the intersection between the forecast and the budget, and so I do think it's.
That's when you meet with, um, with you, right? Because that's the one I used to meet with you and Dr. D.
It probably makes sense for the same people on Financial Forecast to be on that, because if you weren't on Financial Forecast, you would have to look at it anyway.
They're kind of tied.
Do you have any use?
Alright. Technology.
I'll stay on it, but I.
I'd love to learn more.
I don't. Again, I don't know what the charge of that is, do you, Bill?
Yeah, I'm gonna talk about that tonight, the goals, we've got a new tech position.
I kinda wanna stay on it, because we have a new person coming, so I think it would be fun to do that.
Okay. Yeah, that sounds like a good opportunity. Carrie and I talked about some DEI work, Jamil is our, represents SPS on the town, but we have this sort of ambiguous kind of check-in role that we do, but I was thinking of kind of getting someone else an opportunity there to connect, and Carrie was interested, so I'd like to put you in.
It's fine, like this is one to talk about at the retreat too.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's great, because it's an ever-evolving area.
Well, and I think what we were talking about is now with tie in place, because this isn't just like student DEI stuff, this could be district and town, and so I think there's a lot of opportunity there.
I put my own name there, because I'm interested in collective bargaining, because I'm, I don't know, interested in all that stuff.
Does it have to be the Chair and the Vice Chair?
I don't think so. I didn't know if you were interested in that, because you were doing Financial Forecast, or if you wanted to do, or if anyone else was interested.
I'm kind of interested, I'm kind of interested just because I wanna learn it, but like.
Oh, you haven't done it?
I haven't.
My comments are that, I went through it, well, the reason, I think what we talked about years ago when we established this, but it was kind of like we wanted to create some bench strength, it only comes through every three years.
Right. It's a heavy lift.
So personally, I, personally, I, I'm very interested in doing it, however, commentary, it's the biggest lift of any committee you'll be on for the next, at least, it will probably start in, what, November, January, and it could go for, we're seeing other towns that aren't moving there, so. As much as I wanna be on it, that lift is heavy and it's a big commitment, I think it was like, what, do we have twelve meetings and most of them were during the day? At least. So it's, for anyone, it's a big ask, and that's why I'm debating whether or not I can maintain that responsibility, but for anyone else that's considering it, it is, most of it's during the day, I think.
I did, so that works better for me during the day, I would prefer, because my kids are at school and I can flex my schedule, so.
Yeah, I think, I'm trying to remember, I'm trying to remember, it was like.
Some of it was during the day.
Two o'clock to like eight o'clock.
It was like late afternoons, because they're there, they're working and.
On the floor, I know a couple we'd extend, it's, it's a huge time, kind of, but it's hugely important.
It's, yeah.
Yeah, there's good though, it's huge. Yeah. I mean, I would like to do it, so.
I feel like everybody should do it.
Alright, is that one that someone could observe or not?
I don't think so.
Just thinking about how to build that strength. I would do that, but.
I don't think you could, because those aren't public meetings.
Well, you know what, you can build the bench strength a little by knowing it comes every three years and maybe, you know, prepping for that by, I don't know, we can talk about it at the retreat. But I'm happy to do it, Carrie wants to do it, I'd say.
Because you've done it before, right? So it would be good, it would be good to do it with someone who's been through it, someone to debrief that stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Great.
Alright. Carrie and Janice, Sick Leaf Bank. Oops, sorry, Policy. So. What do you guys wanna do?
Well, I volunteer, because you, I thought you were coming off, but if you wanna stay on.
It doesn't have to be.
I didn't know, because you were doing Capital Planning, you were thinking about going off Policy.
I do run the thing. But if you wanna. I mean, you run a lot.
Well, I mean, tech and DEI, I mean, collective bargaining will be the big lift.
Yeah. If you, if you wanna do it.
I mean, you could do it with Maria again, and then like, I, I just, I just, again, I just would like to get involved, but I think you guys did a good, you folks did a good job of engaging us in like first and second read, so maybe that's a way to be involved versus being your point first on the committee.
And then maybe after, just over one more year.
That's fine, and then.
Because of the bargaining will be done and.
Yeah, that's fine, so put Janice back up there.
I'll still stay on.
Okay.
I think Policy is another thing we could be talking about at the retreat too.
Yes.
Because that's a way to sustain long-term structure for the committee.
Yeah, I find one of the things that I started doing is like looking at our policy manual, and I also look at other towns too sometimes, and I learned a lot that way.
I agree with that, and you can, and obviously more retreat to talk, but yes, Policy, we can, we can get into it in other ways.
That's a perfect example of one that I think you could spread the work, you know, like you guys said, we need to look at these.
Yeah.
Three things or something, right?
Or even they could say, yeah, right, because there's a policy that, exactly, like I was talking to Carrie earlier about a policy that I was interested in, like you can propose that day where you, if something, maybe through, even, you might discover one through, you know, on the communication, you know, like, well, yeah, we can get there in different ways.
Right, yeah. Yeah. Technology.
Technology.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, one of the students had a fabulous presentation on AI, and we do not have an AI policy, so. At the civics showcase was fantastic.
And the schedule, the band schedule.
Alright, School Building Committee, that's an easy, MSBA said, it's me and Janice, oh, sorry, I don't want us to have Sick Bank, sorry. Sick Bank.
I'm happy to stay on that, it's pretty clean.
Yeah, I'm happy to stay on too, but I've been on that for years, since I started.
Oh, wow.
Really, that's a, it's not negotiation, but it's a good one to learn like HR policy procedures.
Yeah, I'll do Sick Bank. I'll do it.
I have like an encyclopedia of HR knowledge.
Okay. Alright, West Fork Sister City.
I had no idea I was on that.
You could have gone to France and Ireland.
I know.
There were two trips, right, to France and Ireland.
I missed both trips.
I'll do it, my husband will be mad, but I'll do it.
I, I didn't do anything, so I don't, I didn't know I was on it, to be honest, I don't know, it doesn't.
Oh.
You can leave, you can leave me on, and now maybe I'll try to, try to dig a little deeper.
Okay.
The Select Org, I know, I should have.
Only a couple of them, not a whole floor. Now we have three kids.
Alright, Stipend positions, which could be. Could be busy.
So you think it is gonna be busy?
It will be.
You do?
It was.
Can we just do that?
So what I, from my experience, from my experience, the, well, you guys will go through negotiating the union contract, and a portion of that contract will include the stipends. And that was a big hurdle for us during the last contract, and it, I think historically has kind of come near the end, I think, so we don't know the timing of it, but when you have it, it probably will be, I don't know, it'll be a heavy one, but it will be sometime, but not, not, nothing major. But it's interesting too, you learn about all these different roles and jobs that are out there that are stipended.
I would like to stay.
It's nothing, it's nothing ma, it's nothing major, but it will come at some point.
I would like to stay on it because of my background, interest in leadership roles for teachers, I feel like I just know a lot about that, so.
I'm happy to give it up, but it won't.
It might make sense to have someone who does contract.
Yeah.
And so if you do, you know what I mean, stay on it with me.
Sure.
Just if, if it does dovetail.
Yeah, okay.
Great.
Okay, that has been sorted out. And we all have access to this document. And yeah, we can vote on the slate of town liaison positions for twenty-four, twenty-five.
So we do make a motion to approve the town liaison positions for twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we have public comment. No, I'm seeing, no, hands raised, no one in person desires to speak tonight, student reports, Lee Vickery and David Murphy. They are gonna need a mic.
Here, guys, thank, thank you. Alright.
How's everyone? Everybody doing well? So first, we have our sports update, the spring sports seasons are coming to an end, and the following teams have winning records, girls and boys lacrosse, baseball, girls and boys tennis, and girls and boys track. And we're also looking forward to the state tournament, which will be starting soon. The baseball team hosted a game against Quincy to honor our faculty on Monday, May thirteenth, many staff members attended the game to support our baseball team, which was awesome. Next, we have some general updates, Citroen High School hosted the Spring for the Arts Celebration on Thursday, May ninth, hundreds of families came to Citroen High School to enjoy band and chorus performances, shows, art projects, and pottery. Citroen High School's junior prom was at the Venetia Restaurant in Boston on Friday, May tenth, it began with a prom night at Citroen High School before we all took buses to Boston, and it was a really fun night, so we thanked the junior class student government for putting it together. We had our annual powder puff game on Thursday, May sixteenth, run by Student Council, and it was a nice opportunity for junior and senior girls to get together as the school year winds down. And lastly, the second annual Cit, Citroen Civic Action Projects Showcase was on Thursday, May sixteenth, and students presented their civic action projects to community advisors who represent various town departments, so that's all I have today, so thank you.
Alright, my turn, so Citroen High School is, oh, I was a little close to the mic there, my bad, Citroen High School is one of seven districts in the state of Massachusetts that has been invited to attend the Youth Leadership Conference at Bridgewater State University on May sixteenth, twenty-twenty-four, hosted by the Matt Light Foundation. Mrs. Kirk and Mrs. Loaves took thirty-nine Citroen High School student leaders, and this conference is designed to educate, motivate, and activate young people, giving them the tools that they need to become effective ethical leaders in their home, school, and community. I actually went there my sophomore year, and it was a really, really like interesting experience, and Matt Light, he's an amazing person, so it's a really amazing like experience for students to have, so that's exciting. So additionally, the following students have been selected by the American Legion Citroen Post to represent Citroen, Citroen High School at the Boys State and Girls State Convention on June sixth, June fifteenth through June twenty-first. And these people are Nikolai Bokovich, Willa Zanes, Jame Ryan, Leah Brennan, and Kelsey Modern, so congratulations to these students, and again, this is another amazing experience. So Math MCAS at Citroen High School will also be taking place on Tuesday, May twenty-first, and Wednesday, May twenty-second. Principal Rollo Ranger would like to thank Mrs. Kirk, Mr. Luette, and Ms. Rundle for helping plan this important exam. A Citroen High School class of twenty-two, twenty-four graduation will be on Friday, May thirty-first, at six, six P M. on the game field, and as you can imagine, it's definitely a mixed experience for a lot of us seniors, but, a mixed feeling, but I think it's exciting, but it's also sad. So I guess on that note, thank you guys for everything you've done for the seniors here at SHS, we really appreciate it, it means a lot to us.
Is this your last meeting with us?
No, I mean, I'm happy to, if you'll let us back in, I'd be glad to come back for the, for, I think there's two left. So I'd be happy, be extremely happy to come back, so hopefully not over just yet, but not to get too sappy then.
Alright.
On Friday, May third, the School Counseling Department sponsored a trip to the NACAC College Fair in Boston. Over thirty juniors attended the event with Ms. Ryan and Ms. Kimani from the Counseling Department. And additionally, finally, during the past two weeks, SHS successfully administered a record number of AP exams, over seven-hundred-and-sixty, covering twenty different subjects. Counselors have been assisting with the administration of the advanced placement exams by providing proctoring support to students during the exams. And with that, I think that's all we have to say, so thank you all.
Thank you. We'll cheer really loud for you on the thirty-first.
Thank you.
See you next week.
I know, it's not that real fast. The third. Alright. Dr. Rab, School Choice.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I draw your attention. Thank you, Madam Chair, I draw your attention to the memo that I put in everybody's packets, this is a vote that we have to do every year to discuss school choice, so pursuant to the general law, Chapter seventy-six, allows Massachusetts students to enroll in districts where they do not live, unless the district votes to opt out of the program by June first of each year, so the school committee, school committee has to take action in order to opt out of the program if it chooses to. Districts may elect to opt out if there's no space available, and historically, Citroen has not participated and has opted out over the years. At this time, I don't see any advantage to Citroen allowing school choice, as we do have full enrollment, and would recommend the school committee continue to opt out of the program, and I did provide a form of the vote in the memo. And just to be clear, this has nothing to do with special education tuition, so that's a whole separate thing, we can certainly tuition students, and this is the other school choice option.
Yep, alright, thank you. Janice.
So if we opt out, that means students that would wanna come here aren't unable to, or is it, or does it go both ways, where families who are looking at another district?
So they can, so it would only go one direction, so if, let's say, for example, and I don't know whether or not they do, so I'm just using this as an example, let's say Norwell had school choice, a family living in Citroen could choose to go to Norwell, and there'd be nothing we could do to stop them, they could choose to do that. What we're saying here is that we're not allowing a Norwell family or a Cohasset family to come to us.
But unless we provide a program that Norwell doesn't provide, in which case they do come to us and they can.
Yes, as a special education student, yes, this, this vote does not preclude that agreement.
Alright. Take a motion on school choice.
Alright, I'll make a mo, I'll make a motion to not participate in school choice for twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-two, twenty-five, as outlined in M G L, Chapter seventy-six, Section twelve, B C. Thank you.
Alright.
Second.
You have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, SHS World Language Teacher, Miss Jay, also contributed to China, oh my gosh.
Thank you, thank you so much. So you did talk about the trip to China, the students are very excited about it, and the trip we are looking at has nine days, and the time we are thinking about it during February or April break, will leave a day or two earlier before the break, then will come back during the break, leaving like a day or two, so they have some time to rest and go back to school. And the places we have been looking at are three cities in China, we have Beijing, Shanghai, and Xi'an. And the total price for the trip will be around four thousand, and they do provide like a monthly payment plan for students. and they do provide like a monthly payment plan for students to make it easier to pay.
You ready?
The school committee check for us?
I know. It's gotta be some liaison.
We do have plenty of teachers who are already up. I'm very interested.
I'm sure. What do you need to take advantage of those opportunities? Okay. Any questions, anyone?
Is, um, sorry, is there like, is like a program? Are you like applying to be part of a program? Kind of how, who coordinates all of this?
Uh, this is through a travel agent, I don't know if you can see this, but it's through the Explorerica travel agent.
Okay.
They do, um.
Oh, sorry, I missed that on the thing.
Yes, it's.
I do have it, sorry. I couldn't.
Yeah, they organize different sports shops.
There's two different.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, I didn't see it here, but I, and I can't open it, but okay, I just wanted to make sure of that.
Oh, I can't open it right now. I could open it earlier, though. There's two different forms.
Okay.
You could open the other one.
That's one of the. Got it.
This is like the, yeah.
Yeah, I could open that one. Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure that it was like, there was a little bit more detail than, we just have the, um, the approval cover sheet and the, I couldn't get into the other thing, but that's good.
Thank you.
Have we done this trip before, or is this a, a brand new?
Uh, I've done a long time. It's a, it's, it's a new trip, I would say, because before pandemic, we do have trip to China, but it's through a different travel agent. Um.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's like new for that perspective, but we do have trip to China before pandemic.
And that was the first trip, I think, wasn't it?
Yes.
Um, neat. So you'll take, wow, and it's kind of, it's kind of neat that it's ninth through twelfth grade can all.
Yes.
Can all participate. Um, do you, do you anticipate having the fifteen or more students interested, with the interest right now?
Uh, so, yeah, uh, like all my memory for class day, they are like very interested. They will be seniors next year.
Yeah.
Uh, so.
That's great.
That group is about like ten or more students. I do have students from my memory three group, they are very interested. And they say they have friends who like to join, we're gonna make the decision, are we going to open a trip for like the
Hmm.
other students in other classes to sign up, so we will need to see the numbers.
Very cool. Right.
So you need a minimum of fifteen to be?
Yes.
Yes, okay. All right, we'll take a motion on this amazing opportunity. Well, but that indicates how I would vote.
Um, I make a motion to that the school committee approves the, uh, China field trip as presented.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, uh, Superintendent Burkett. With the administrative assistant.
So, um, I'd like the committee to consider, um, the position, uh, adding a position of administrative assistant, assistant to the director of food services, which would allow our expanding food services program, the, uh, director and staff an opportunity to have some, somebody come in and assist with paperwork, daily duties. The workload has increased, paperwork has increased, and this position we feel would benefit us and free up our director to do, um, other visionary things within the department, so I recommend this position, um, consideration.
Take a motion on that new, uh, position.
I make a motion that the school committee votes to approve the non-union personnel administrative assistant to the director of food service job description.
My second. Second by Ms. Stanwyck, any discussion? Seems like an important role to, to support the director of food services. It's great. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Back to you Superintendent Burkett, self-assessment goals.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Each year, the superintendent sets goals for the district and, um, then reports out and does a self-assessment, uh, per this meeting, and I've dubbed this the state of the district to, um, entail a summary of the, uh, work towards those goals and what lies ahead. And I'm excited to report on this tonight, and, um, all the big work we're doing. First, I'd like to kind of give a summary of my, in my fourth year here, which, it seems good, it's like it's gone really fast for me. And initially, it would seem very long, the first year was like ten, and now it's, where they go. But I'm very proud of this, one thing that I thought, or allowing to clear when I applied for this job was we wanted stability. We had three superintendents in five years or something like that. So we, I think we have stability, uh, we're gaining consistency, I think we've developed a lot of transparency and trust. We'll continue to do that, and I think last year by creating a strategic plan, we've developed, um, a vision for the district. And tonight, we're gonna share, um, how that's reflected in our goals. So if we could use the next slide, please, um, as I go down, please, uh, feel free to ask any questions, but I'll pause after each slide. So I shared these slides at the beginning of the year, but this is more educational for the community, and the importance of goal setting and how we align it to make sure that it achieves the ultimate goal of student achievement. And that includes, um, academic as well as social emotional achievement for our students. And I would even add, under superintendent goals, strategic plan, now that we have that guiding link, if you will, my goals are aligned to that, the administrative's goals are aligned to mine, and the teacher's goals to the administrators, which dovetail into, uh, student achievement, all aligned with our strategic plan. I think it has made a big difference having that strategic plan, but honestly, I'll put out some examples tonight, but it really helps having something to guide us that was implemented by a collective voice. Next slide, please. This is the, kind of the process, we're in the orange now, the evaluation, and it kind of goes full circle, but again, for our community, the superintendent will, uh, will be evaluated by the school committee at the next meeting. This is my opportunity to present how we're doing, to give them some reflection, as well as my performance during the year, and et cetera. So the four parts of the rubric before the evaluation superintendent are instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, and professional culture. After that, and kind of a restart of the self-assessment process, which is, you know, happening tonight, I reflect on the rubric, I share with the committee my self-assessment on, uh, where I believe I stand. I will say that I'm hopefully critical of my performance and have high standards, wanna be a role model for the district, and can certainly do better, and looking forward to do that. So I use that as an opportunity to self-reflect each year and take it very seriously, just as our administrators and teachers do. Um, we, I look at the data that comes out, which I'll share some tonight, and it's, um, coming in all the time, so I'll see where we are with that. Certainly, take the feedback from the committee at the next meeting, every year that's extremely helpful. And adminis, input from the administrative team, staff feedback, uh, the relevant evidence, which is community feedback. An example would be the school building project and all we learned from that, um, and how to engage the community. So that's kind of the process there, and then the goal setting, um, happens over the summer, based on that self-assessment information. Um, our strategic plan certainly will be added to this bullet here. And then the three goals that I have are student learning goals, professional practice, and district improvement, and then we'll be talking about those this evening in detail. So I wanted just to give a snapshot and reminder of the strategic plan, I've mentioned it a few times here. I will point out, um, each of the strategic objectives. We have three, teaching, learning, and leading, uh, communication and community partnerships, and finance facilities, personnel, and technology, that's a big one to catch all there. But there's three overarching objectives, and then they have outcomes defining them. The goals are typically aligned to those, to create ultimately our core values you see under there. Uh, when these are realized, these goals, that's who we become, our core values, and you can read those there. And, uh, and our mission is, together, we inspire, capital we, meaning all of us are, are part of this, uh, process, support and challenge all learners to reach their unique. Okay, so here's the first goal, and this was the, uh, student learning goal, there's two. And again, the use of we, because we all do this, I'll be reporting out certainly as I'm responsible for it. Uh, we'll collect, assess, uh, and monitor data, and show improvement in accountability ratings in Cituwe High School. And just to give some context to this, this is relative to the, um, bullet points on the right. Those are all criteria used to measure, uh, percentile ranking of individual schools compared to other schools. Our number was seventy-eight, so it's a very clean number to use, that we want to get higher than seventy-eight percent of the other schools. Now, the problem with that is that number doesn't come out to the fall, when all this data, end of the year, data is collected by the state and given back to us. So we talked about this, and the committee gave me feedback when we set the goals, that, okay, we still want to reach that goal. We won't be able to talk about it at this May meeting, but we wanted some specific goals that could contribute to this by attacking the, um, accountability rubrics that the state uses, achievement, growth, high school completion, and the additional indicators, which are absenteeism and advanced coursework completion. So you'll see that thread throughout here, and we believe if those things are improved, and there's some baseline set up, then the score will improve. So that's the approach we're taking, and next slide, we'll get into it. Oh, just want, so I wanted to, I'm sorry, can you go back one slide, please? All right. So I want to just read that, uh, goal, or the objective on the right, completion of baseline year of six to twelve benchmarking in math and E.L.A. So we had talked about, and again, additional context, we've done a lot of work in the first three, three years on the elementary schools. We've done the reading program, literacy, um, S.E.L. And we thought this year, and it's not to mean we don't do work at those levels, we still do, but the focus needed to be on the flagship school. We, the high school needed some work in this area, so that's where the focus is here. And the math and E.L.A., um, we didn't get to the math goal here, so full disclosure, we focused on resources, and I'll get to that in a little more detail. Math has no common resources for teachers, and a teacher created, a lot of teacher-created documents, so to support our staff there, uh, you might remember in the budget, we put several hundred thousand dollars, uh, into math resources, and that was piloted this year by our teachers to develop those. So we felt that had to come first before we implemented the common, uh, benchmark assessment. So we focused on E.L.A., so this, this goal is not completely met. Progress has made on E.L.A., so we'll focus on that, but I wanted to give you the context of, um, math was not, and will be, you'll see as I put what this next steps are. Math will be certainly focused next year. Next slide, please. So E.L.A., I think it's been brought up, that IXL is not a favorite of our staff, or our committee, or myself. And we wanted something else that could achieve a few things, that could be consistently used, that could be a benchmark model for the upper grades. But also could be comparable to the elementary, so that a child conceivably, the ultimate goal, K through twelve, will have a consistent measure in literacy that can be used and follow them, so that the teacher having them next year will have a good understanding of where that child, um, is, as far as literacy goes, and their growth over time. And so the model we looked at to achieve this, and this one, again, one measurement, is a reading inventory that determines Lexile's course for children, and that's their, uh, ability to read and comprehend. We believe that's the foundation of all learning is, is student training. So we're, we're excited about this, it really went well. And I just gave a couple of bullet points on the right. Excuse me, first of all, the teachers were trained by an outside group that came in, uh, with expertise in Lexile. Assessments and, and understanding them, uh, so that was, the English department had that, six through twelve, to understand that, that to the beginning of the year. And we were poised by the middle of the year to give our first, middle of the year benchmark, um, reading inventory, and that was exciting. And so what, what do we do with that information? On the right, you'll see some things that we started to do. Again, this is our first year trying this out, so we use the Lexiles as an element for course selection in history, science, and E.L.A. And I should back up and just kind of, for those that aren't familiar with the Lexile, and, you know, the more I learn about it, the more fascinating it comes for me. So obviously, it's a focus on literacy. We're getting away from the one-size-fits-all. For example, one class reads one book, um, that might be not the appropriate reading level for all students in that class. Now we have the ability to determine where each child is, um, and their ability to read with books, I think that's helpful. Uh, also, it's a common measure that we can start using to compare apples to apples, to support our students. And it also helps to match these students' ability with the text they read. And finally, it could be a good opportunity, and I'll get to this, when we start sharing this information with parents, like we do on the elementary level, uh, we think it could help parents identify books for their children to read, uh, knowing and understanding their child's Lexile score, understanding what that means, and choosing books for them that are appropriate, and to push them. So those are all kind of exciting things about that. And we piloted some of this this year with the, um, history, science, and E.L.A. And that was more of a secondary measure, for example, if we had a student that didn't take an A.P. class or didn't meet the requirements, but was off the charts in a Lexile, we would have to ask ourselves, well, what's the disconnect? And, and speaking to Principal Beattie recently about this too, in his excitement, there were things found at the middle school that, okay, a student might have poor grades and be a behavior problem, but is off the charts with Lexile. Could that mean a child's boarding class? It was some, so there was some aha moments with this data, very exciting, and I think, you know, with any change, initially, the teachers were excited about it, but okay, wanted to see what, and it, it panned out that a lot of these stories came, uh, and into play, so we're, we're loving it for that, and also the ability eventually to share with parents, but also to expand it, and, you know, K through twelve mentioned. The last two bullets are where it dovetails in with the next goal, which is our work with the, um, pilot work with the S-three grant at the middle school. And our M.T.S.S., multi-tiered system of supports, which is a big part of our, uh, strategic plan, uh, meeting every kid where they're at. Uh, this is very individualized and supports that, so the Gates team uses, and I can't wait to show you the new way we're looking at, uh, data, because we've talked about it, uh, in this, in this school for a long time. I actually rated myself, uh, needs improvement in this area, because I'm just a sponge about it now, I'm so excited about it, but there's so much to learn. But I really am loving this Lexile stuff, so I will say that, and I'll be honest about it, that I'm learning it, but I'm learning it with the team, and I've got some good teachers. So this is, I think, great things for the, for the kids, for our staff. And then we're looking to administer the end-of-the-year assessments, and now we can start seeing the growth of the children. Again, apples to apples for the teachers, so they're excited to see that information on how the kids grow over time. I'll take a little pause there.
Question?
And next slide? Okay, so we typically don't have this kind of information in the spring for our middle and high school. We do have IXL, but in high school, no. So this is our first run at, um, just using this benchmark in the middle of the year. So we have nothing to compare it with yet until we do the end of the year. However, what we can focus on right away are any of the students in the gray. So that's the, you know, feeling are far below category, now those kids, you know, we can't wait to the end of the year benchmark. So those students have been identified, um, and the team, and we'll get into the S-three other middle schools looking at it. The, you know, the English department has started to look at that, and, you know, they're asking questions, okay, wh- wh- is that consistent with how the students performing in school? Are they getting supports, necessary supports in place, what's the story behind every student? That gets kind of into the M.T.S.S., where you're starting to look at every individual student and the story behind it. So this is helpful to have, and again, it's consistently important. So I talked a little bit about the baseline year, this year, we have common data set now to use. We compared other data elements, we'll be able to compare this to MCAS, so that's gonna be a big question, I think, was asked with the IXL. Is it, does it correlate with the MCAS scores? And I think what, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think over half the kids in the country are taking this, taking this inventory, some type of inventory that measures Lexile. So, and some states are using it as part of their assessment, um, state testing, we are not. Uh, so that was interesting, so we're not the first to do this, I think that's important to know, that is, it is pretty prevalent. And again, when I get to later on in the presentation, I'll show you a snapshot of all the data points we'll be looking at for each child, you know, to support them, and to, you know, ties in with our M.T.S.S. plan. And then the last point I talked about, I'm sorry, the goal of next year is to communicate this out to parents. So the parents will be, will get the mid-year, will get the end-of-year benchmark, then we'll get the beginning of next year in the fall. We'll have those three data points to share with all the children that have taken the assessment to date with the parents. Yep, please.
Um, so first question, you mentioned this idea that it wouldn't be one book, one class? That, that, this idea that people might be, students might be at different levels, right? So I'm wondering, as, I'm, I'm wearing both a school committee hat and a parent hat, so like, what is that? So like, what does that look like in practice now? Like, is that kind of approach happening in the classrooms now with how they're approaching ELA? Is that coming? What should we expect as?
Well, I think with this information, we're trying to move away from that. You know, initially, we had some of that and we may have a little bit left, but philosophically, Ms. Driscoll, I did not advance that philosophy, that one book per class. And so I think that's been implemented across the departments. Now it's validated with this kind of information, so I think that will become the norm.
Okay. The other question is, given this is new data for our students, when you, when we look at this data, I'm trying to sort of, can you contextualize it for me? So like, this, I know this is a starting point. So like, are you comparing this to distributions around the country, in the state? Like, how are we, how should I think about this data, I guess, is what I'm asking?
Yeah, I think what we were going to do is, at this point, compare it, because it's the first one.
Yeah.
And we don't know the student buy-in, or they, you know, they're taking it seriously, that type of stuff. So we wanted to do an end-of-the-year, kind of look at that and see for, you know, the reliability of it and then compare it. You know, students from mid-year to the end of the year would be the first way to do that. And then we could go out to the greater state or nation, but we haven't done that yet.
Okay, and then the last question is, when I look from year to year at the, you know, the grade, especially the lower, are, is that so moving from, I think it's eight, is that eight percent to ten percent and then down to nine percent?
Sixteen.
Where?
Junior year.
Oh, sixteen. So what I'm wondering is, again, with interpretation, is that my knee-jerk reaction is how are those students slipping through the cracks? But then my second, maybe more critical eye is, is it just that the material is getting harder? Or, so these are questions that I have, just wondering how I, how I should take in that data?
Well, I think we're asking ourselves the same question. And that's the whole goal of this, being our first one, start asking those questions. But also that this is one data point too, and that we should look at other ones beside this. So I think, you know, that's the exciting part about it. First time we've looked at it, it begs to ask those questions, junior year, what's, why is that still high? Is that, now at the end of the year, is that consistent? Again, is that number still high? And then we have to start looking at the individual students in that case. And then, like you said, outside context, is it curriculum? Is it teacher-led? You know, those are the questions we have to ask.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna make one more assessment.
Oh yeah, I'm just thinking.
Because I, since it's new to everybody, I think, again, if I put on my parent hat as we roll this out to the public, and I know you're always working on your communication strategy, which I appreciate. I think something that would be helpful probably to parents and caregivers is that what you just did with me, modeling the kinds of questions that are coming up for you and your team, would be helpful to verbalize to the community. Because otherwise, I'm not sure people are gonna necessarily know how to take in the data. So I love that you were sort of talking that through with me, so maybe just doing more of that. Even, I'm not asking that you have the answer yet, but just what are the questions that it's bringing up for you?
Yeah. No, I think it's great advice and I think that's part of the conversation that we are starting to have about rolling this out to parents. And we learned some lessons when we did the elementary. I think we even had a discussion about that as well, that we've got some lessons learned there in our two blocks that, okay, education piece should come first before just sending this out because even, we're still learning it. I'm talking to you about it, but I also think by next year, we'll have some good, while we'll have it down pretty good, that we can go and educate the parents on it before we share this data with them. I think it's great advice.
That was my question, was kind of backing off the carries of what have you, what have you learned from working through this with the elementary level and benchmarking, communicating out? But there's another question I was gonna ask, but now I don't remember what it is. That's it. Anyone else?
A lot of questions, I need to think.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, next. So, another part, if you recall, of the accountability rating that can contribute, contributor, obviously, and it's something we've talked about a lot, is attendance rates, national, state, and district problems, certainly. And, you know, a big part of that issue was, we addressed it in policy. We've been verbalizing with parents, it is a, it's a community, it's one of those we things. It can't just be the schools, it has to be all of us. So just, you know, taking this opportunity to share these numbers with the community, with the school committee tonight, just give you a snapshot, within years' time, we're committing to this, you know, and to consistently monitor this and work on it. So you see Cushing with a slight increase, almost the same. Need to do better there. Adely down. Jenkins, again, same slightly up. Wampetuck made the largest gain. They had the highest number, so they got back down to the five percent. Gates is another, again, good, good growth there, if you will, or improvement in attendance. High school improving. And overall, the district improved over five percent and
So that's absentee, that's rate of absence.
Correct.
Because that attendance rate title is confusing.
Yes, well, it might be ninety-five percent present, for example. Yeah, thank you. And I, I didn't have, I have some numbers here too, because I think the other thing that we don't have up there is like, how many kids does this mean? And we didn't want to do that because it, it might distort it. For example, the high school has a lot more kids than Adely. So if we put forty-five up there for the high school, we thought percentage was, you know, was apples to apples where. So just for example, though, I will give you some numbers and I do have the chief committee, if they want to look at it. So in two thousand twenty-one, twenty-two, the average kids out per day for the Citro High School is fifty-six point nine, all fifty-seven kids. Yeah. And then last year was forty-eight point four kids a day. And this year it's forty-five point one. So it's trending in the right direction over three years. I can read them all. Cushing, twenty-one, twenty-two was nineteen point five students a day. Last year was seventeen point nine, it's back to nineteen point three. Adely, fourteen point two, thirteen point seven, and now down eleven point nine, so that's a good progress. Jenkins, twenty-one, twenty-two is thirteen point five students, thirteen point four last year, and now fourteen seven. And Wampetuck, thirty point eight students in twenty-one. They're twenty-seven point three last year and now down to nineteen, so pretty significant there. That's from almost thirty-one kids a day absent to nineteen. And Gates, thirty-eight point seven, thirty-five point nine, and then down to thirty-one. Again, seven students per day improvement there. High school, I gave you, there were about twelve students a day improvement in two years.
I have a couple of questions. I remember from the fall, one of the things that Miss Desi cares about is the number of students who are absent more than ten days.
Yes.
And so I was curious if you have that data for this year because I think the daily rate obviously matters, but what also matters is the kids who are habitually missing. And then I was also reading something recently about student absenteeism, because it's such a hot topic. And one of the things that they were pointing out is if schools can track not only who is missing and how many people are missing, but also what their pattern is. So like, if a family goes on vacation and the kid misses a week, obviously that is one thing. But if a kid is missing one or two days every week consistently, it adds up to the same number of absences, but it's more harmful in a lot of ways for the kid. So I was just thinking that that would be also something to think about.
Yeah. We don't have that tonight, but I certainly will get that because that is exactly what, you know, and I think that's a good idea because that's exactly what Desi uses, chronic absenteeism, ten on one. So that's, that's a number we need to get. And I think it's a good point too, is what's, what's that story behind that? If a kid has ten absences, was a ten-day vacation with the family, might have to work with them and all that, not that that's condoned versus just cutting school, things like that. So, again, you'll see this on that data sheet, if you will, the story of each child. Attendance is certainly a piece of that, along with the Lexile and other things. And we look at the whole picture of the student getting more aligned with the MTS and having some structure to it.
Yeah, that was gonna be my thoughts too. Depending on which track a student or family was on and the why behind the absenteeism, that would tie to certain MTSS initiatives, I'm sure, you know, we're working on. Yeah.
Thank you, I can get that. So the next one is rigorous coursework. And I'm really impressed with the growth we've made here over the last several years at high school and, you know, this number, this first number here is the increase in students enrolling in one-on-one AP courses. So you can see a slight jump last year and then we went up to three hundred and fifty this year. And I think that's, I know that's because of access. We've provided more courses, we've provided younger students, our sophomores now have opportunities. And next year with a seminar, we're opening it up to freshmen. So we're challenging more students to take these courses. What's not here, and I know Ms. Driscoll, every year, and something else next year sadly, will present our AP. But we do know it's aligning pretty good because the other important data point is that our students passing, the three or better. So that's not, you know, that's purposely not here because we shared that and we were, there was a correlation there, but we look forward in the fall again, when we get those numbers from these recent AP tests, say, okay, to have this three fifty now and then next to it, how many of those students got a three or better? And we break it out to four and five and all that kind of stuff. And we'll look at that over the course of three years as well. So we'll be able to tell that story, but it's exciting that we have more kids participating. You know, the ultimate goal is that every child by junior and senior year will have taken one rigorous course at Citro High School, every single child. If we can get there, that's pretty awesome. And we'll show you some other ways we're getting there where it doesn't always have to be AP. And I'll tell that story a little bit later. So that's, that's a real good number. This is an even more powerful number, I think, just the visual. So, I got here in two thousand twenty-one, our team, we were, in two thousand twenty, we had four sixty-two. We made a real commitment to this. Because I was honestly sick of getting the Newsweek top one hundred schools and we were a hundred and something. And although I still don't buy into that because I think it's to sell newspapers or magazines, whatever they do now. A lot of it's these things that we're improving. So we will go up, because there was some truth to it, certainly. Anyways, I digress, but I think that motivated us to say, hey, you know, we do need to do work and we're honest with ourselves. And we still need to do work and, you know. But this is a, from, and Dr. Rat helped me with my math today. And I had to refresh my high school classes, but I figured out on my own after he taught me that from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-four, it's a sixty-five percent increase. Sixty-five percent in the number of exams taken. So we're increasing the number of students, and this is with a decrease in enrollment. Right, because a person could be, I don't have those numbers, but we know from our budget series that the numbers have slightly gone down. So maybe that will be a fall data point to include in here is enrollment in, like, because although it's gone up to seven sixty-two, and I know Dave was very part of that, we are as well, that's with less students in the school. So again, this is pretty impressive stuff. And I want to congratulate our teachers, our administrators, and our, certainly our students and their families for this. It's something to be very proud of.
I don't know if it's a question or comment, but morph into whatever it morphs into. So as that growth continues, which is great, certain points of pressure maybe occur. So something to keep in mind about incoming, you know, as, as you open up opportunity for ninth graders and tenth graders and how their schedules are fairly tight and they don't have a lot of choice. So, you know, for students that are in band or chorus to be able to then also take on an AP as a freshman or sophomore is a certain, a point of tension. And I love, I would love to see that addressed or, if possible, you know.
Thank you. Yeah, we certainly can do that and I'll share some other options too besides the AP that students can take that might not be, you know, feeling that pressure right when they walk in the door, they've got to take an AP. There's other, I guess, other paths that we're looking at, I think, that I'll share in the next slide. So here's the offerings that we have in AP. And I just wanted to point out, again, the last, all this telling the story of how and what we, and opportunities we provided our students last three years, so in red, we just added the year, those were new courses. So there's twenty-four here, including one for next year. Six of those are new, so that's twenty-five percent. The last three years of our APs have been added. So again, kudos. My message site has been awesome, great now, great direction, but it's the motivation of the, it's the culture, quite honestly, of the school. Change from, oh, we're just gonna, you know, gonna do APs, to the AP is important here and we value it. So, that's great and we look forward to sharing how those go. The asterisk next to the lab is, we didn't have labs for some reason. It was just chemistry AP without a lab, I don't understand how that could happen, but did. So we've added labs, we're part of that and the kids are benefiting from it. So that was a snapshot for folks to see. And not leave anybody out, we wanted to kind of give the community and the committee kind of a snapshot of all the great things happening that will also, I think, improve our rating under this goal. The math pilot I talked about. So common resources for teachers, similar to our elementary, when we implemented the new curriculum and saw a change there. I expect the same and that will be a goal for next year. The next one is designation, the innovation pathway. You recall that grant we were celebrating in the middle of the year? That's considered a rigorous coursework. So there's the example I was speaking of, that if you're not necessarily into, you might be into STEM stuff and things like that, you take back those courses, that course, and you get, you know, we get credit as a district for that as being a rigorous course. So that's another avenue for kids that may help alleviate that pressure too, for those kids that are passionate about different things. So that's exciting. Another number for high participation in AP mock exams. I think there's definitely a connection between kids taking these and then doing the real thing, it's practice. We didn't have that before. So in science, sixty-two percent in two thousand twenty-four, up to thirty-four, because that's an area that we wanted to improve, almost our science, MCAS and AP schools. Then Project Lead the Way, again, another rigorous addition. But also a cool opportunity for our engineering and students in the STEM fields to get excited about that. Again, another opportunity that not every district has, that we do. And again, another grant, just not hearing this, that, you know, I thought it was interesting that when I shared the money we were saving for that position, and again, it's a team effort. Now you're seeing these things actually in practice. So we go and get these grants and then we add them for kids to have opportunities. Then the expanded refine these civic action projects. I think a handful of you that were at the, I know the kids brought it up tonight. I was blown away by that civic action night. It was just, and Ms. Lesniak brought it up, that look around, there's not many districts doing this. So when people ask, you know, what, you know, what, is the grass greener over there? This is, there's a lot of things in this bullet that a lot of districts aren't doing, and the civic action program is one of them. It was really great to be interviewed in the fall by the kids and then come out and see the projects finalized and then going and participating and asking them questions and, and learning from them and their process on civic engagement. Really, really applicable, real-life, authentic learning for the kids. And it was a great night because the parents were invited as well. So there were community members coming and evaluating on a rubric for the kids. At the same time, parents were there and I thought that was great. For example, I'd go up and speak to one group and their parent might be there and they step back and proudly listen and watch their child interact like real life about what they did, field the questions in real time by a community member. And it was just really nice to see. So I also liked that they sent out, Ms. Longe and Ms. Lesniak sent out a follow-up survey to all of us that participated to make it even better, so I liked that as well. Okay, I'll go a little quicker. The enhanced social-emotional of the AP capstone, with the new courses we're bringing in, you had to go through Desi and apply for this. We, you know, we were improved for that. So I think students coming up will be able to get this degree and have it as part of their diploma, which will certainly help their resume and something else we're excited about with the AP world. We talked about social-emotional, I don't want to leave that out. And we're, Character Strong has really been going well, we believe. Teachers are enjoying it. We didn't have anything K through twelve before for social-emotional, so that consistency is really great. Connected with our, you know, our peer work and our social-emotional team is still meeting. It's a strength of our district, I think, and something that we'll look at along with our academics to when we start looking at the whole child in a more organized manner. The enrollment program is new this year. Again, another avenue for rigorous coursework for students that may not be taking APs. They may, but we noticed that a lot of these kids weren't, but that wanted to experience rigorous coursework. So in our inaugural year, we had six students. If you want to pay, kind of like college, you can pay for the credits. If not, you can take it for the experience. Great partnership with Quincy College now. And already, looking at next year, we have thirty-five students already registered. Really cool, so word's getting out and it's another awesome thing. And, you know, I gotta give Ms. Driscoll the credit for coming up with that, with, I know Greg Minier was involved as well, so. Excellent job there. And Silver, Citro High School learns the Silver Distinction for AP. And I gave you all the reasons why. And maybe we'll get gold next year.
Not silver, I was like.
Yeah, not silver, yeah. No one remembers, I can place my findings, tell me, when I come in with a silver medal. No one remembers second place, my father used to tell me, come in with a silver medal. No one remembers second place.
Go on, run. Come on now.
We all want to fill both ways, yeah, and we all want to fill both ways to school, right? The good old days. Uh, so, uh, so, and then the last one is substantial increases in students who, um, earn a silver by literacy. So you see the whole, all the opportunities here from AP to STEM to world language. We went from, um, in two thousand twenty one, we had five students earn a silver by literacy. In this past year, we had seventeen, we were tripled. And next year, we have already, it looks like we've got nineteen that are shoe ins and then in counting. So when I come back next year, I see that number. I think all these exciting opportunities and our contagious culture of, of excellence that we've been trying to define so long is starting to play out a little bit here with some evidence. And just something, you know, now that we're able to focus on our goals, share on just one, just one building, the biggest in the secondary level. It's, it's good stuff and so we'll continue to work on all these.
Actually, that, that was my other comment. I was gonna say with AP is to, you know, obviously with an incoming new assistant superintendent. And it's such great work and I hope we have good systems in place so that it doesn't, it continues. Because it's like easy to take, such a busy district, it's easy to have other great endeavors kind of capitalize your, uh, people's time and focus. And then it's easy for all of a sudden in, you know, two class cycles, that can drop just as easily as it went up. So.
Yeah, I, I think that's an awesome point. Thank you for bringing that up. And I think why, my opening statement was that consistency and stability is everybody replaceable in a machine that works with systems in place. And I, that's a credit, again, I don't want to give her too much credit because she's lame duck. Uh, but, um, one thing, I gotta balance the praise with.
Yes.
Just, yeah, a little, uh, a little fun. But, uh, we've talked about this a lot from the beginning when these things were set up. They were set up as systems and multiple people. I remember the first thing that, um, Ms. Driscoll and I talked about was creating, um, committees of leaders, of teacher leaders and of administrators, so that it wasn't the central office making all the top down decisions. I remember our first retreat, we brought up the idea and they got to pick. People love a choice. So remember the academies we had during COVID? So the academies and people signed up for that. I want to, that was my passion. And now we have, which you're gonna be hearing about, you know, maybe not at the end of this year, maybe or not beginning next year, our emergency operations plan. We have indeed emergency team at Ryan and Mary. We have talked about they're doing unbelievable work with our fire and police. Um, so again, just examples of systems. So Ms. Driscoll has already assigned those to those building, our district leaders. I obviously know who all those people are. They have institutional knowledge. They've been part of those committees. So those will keep running. Surely the new person will help do that. But also every person's different. So if the new person coming in has different strengths, skill sets as assistant superintendent, they might oversee certain ones. Dr. Rab might help with this. I may help with that. So, um, to answer your question, yes, we do have a plan. And we, by sharing this information and continuing to do so, we hold ourselves accountable to it.
So I have two quick questions. If that's okay. So the first is I noticed in this slide, I'm ridiculous, but previously you used the phrase rigorous coursework. And so I'm just wondering, as a district, how are we defining that phrase? How are you thinking? Like, how are you discerning one from the other?
Yeah, the state has protocols that you have to abide by. So all those programs have been approved by D E S I as rigorous programs that they will count when they, so we already know going in that we're going to get a credit for those courses because D E S I has approved them.
Got it. Okay. The other question is, um, just a wondering really. So I understand from going through the budget process that math is getting a, you know, an overhaul really soon. I guess the question is, in practice, we also know that we have students in seats now taking math that we don't think is meeting the needs of our students and needs improvement. So I'm just wondering, how are you thinking about that? And how are we addressing the students who are in sixth grade now or seventh grade now, who aren't getting the benefits of looking at resources and piloting the math things?
But I think in my next slide or the one after, I have the, the next year's plan is exactly that, but it's a great question because it's an area of growth. There's no question about it and we are aware of that. So thank you. If you mind, I will get to that. Maybe not the next slide, but I do get through the next steps. Uh, so the next, uh, goal, uh, student learning goal was the, uh, participation in, uh, I'll just say S three systemic student support academy with some great partners, but I mean, Boston College, the Rainy Center and D E S I. Again, this is something we had to apply for and earn. Proud of our team for doing that. It was a pilot program, um, that I think from our team received overwhelming, uh, positive feedback on the experience. And we talked about some of the goals of the pilot. It was at Gates for seventh grade, uh, one team. And the administration, Mr. B, participated as well. And, um, next slide, I'll get into some of the details. So this was focused on our, one of our key strategic goals and our strategic plan is, is, you know, providing some order to our multi-tiered systems of support. And I think this is true of a lot of districts and this is certainly true with us. This visual on the right, I love. We've actually implemented the real things that we do, but it's, we do a lot, but not a lot of organization, um, or consistency. And so the whole goal of this and why I think our strategic plan is right on the money is it's guiding us towards cleaning this up and how powerful that can be. And S three, uh, the Rainy Center and D E S I helped us with their coaches and their team coming in to start our work on this. It's very promising. So the next slide is where we want to be, clean, organized with a focused goal. And, um, some of the other things I want to share with you is where this team was able to go this year with our pilot. We're very, um, hopeful about it. Um, so we want to go from chaos to a sustainable system. And I'm going to give some examples of how we did that with this next slide. So here's this slide I've been talking about, about what are we looking at for student data and telling the story of the whole child in a cohesive way. So we moved from a conversation at team meetings about children, maybe their grades or he's been out a lot, she's been out a lot. Or, you know, um, some subjective things about their behavior or things like that. Um, and that was okay, but it wasn't right. We wanted to simplify that and we wanted to make it consistent and we wanted to make it, make it so that it could be repeated and across grades and schools and, um, K through twelve, all depending on what the, um, criteria are. So if you look on the right, there's a lot of stuff there. When team meetings used to happen, they'd have to go and grab this stuff out individually and there was a lot of legwork and, you know, it just got cumbersome. So now we have it and a lot of people had their fingers in it and, you know, and it just became like the picture you saw, chaos. So what this pilot helped us see is that let's identify what's important to, you know, looking at the whole child, what data points we want to look at. We identified these and then these are uploaded, we have access to all of it. These are uploaded in one spot by our, um, data manager. And he, um, has the keys to this and is consistent uploads it. And so when the staff needs access, they just access this information for every child. So it's simplified. You come in, you look at it and I talked about in the middle column, you can see there's the, you know, the, we can look at their, you know, their school year twenty three days absent. You can look at their, um, you know, their grade point average if they're in high school, their grades, um, what they got in their Lexile that I talked about tonight, um, are they on an IEP or not? All this kind of information, behavior, discipline. So now we kind of get the whole picture of a child and not just some subjective bullet points or one MCAST task. And MCAST would be another obvious point here. But again, I think when you hang your hat on one point and we're excited about the Lexile, but it's just one point, it's an important one. But I wanted to show the picture that I think our team that's planning this was excited about is having the ability to look at all of this and tells a more complete story of the child when you're discussing them.
I'm just thinking about how you were talking earlier about rolling out Lexile information to families. And it was reminding me of, um, one of the things I love that, um, happens at Hatherley teacher conferences is that they have like a little cover sheet and it has all these little boxes and they fill in, you know, where is your child on the star reading and the math and this and that. Um, the, I don't know if they put absences on there, but I was just thinking that this information, a lot of this, some of this, obviously a parent would know, but there are some things that like this, all of these extra data points just give also to families another way to learn about their child in addition to the report card. And sometimes there are going to be discrepancies, like your kid is doing a really good job in school. They're doing all their work and they're doing all their projects and all that stuff, but their Lexile level is low. And as a parent, you're going to want to know that and say, okay, like, what are we going to do about this? And how can I support at home? And so I feel like the more information that can come out of this that can also be shared with parents, it could help really inform.
Thank you. Yeah, because we haven't worked on that parent piece since next year. So I think that's good information to have that parents would be open to having more information without overwhelming them. Like I said, that goes back to, I think, another takeaway from this that, um, I think we may get to, but that I was, um, Mr. Beatty was pretty happy about was the community resource piece. And looking at this and realizing that we were taking on so much and that there's so many other, uh, community resources out there for social emotional especially that we could tap into. So they're building that bandwidth now. So that was a good, you know, byproduct of this, um, you know, pilot program. Okay, so, um, what did it help us do? Yes, three academy. Try and move behind my presentation. So we, the goal with the MTSS is to create, you know, an individualized student support plan for all our kids. And then the full criteria on the left, academic, social, emotional health, wellbeing and family. Getting back to the whole child and all that information we showed in the previous slide encompasses that, helps us tell the story. I mentioned, uh, community resources in the next, uh, bullet point there. And I think I mentioned this already, but the, uh, S three granted a lot of, uh, coaches to come in and they were very helpful and knowledgeable. So specialists that deal with this were able to come in and give us an outside perspective, watch, um, our team meetings in action and then give feedback. That was pretty good. And again, we have this for three years, so that's awesome. So we'll be able to expand it and give you more feedback on where it's going. And then the, um, last one is the district accommodation plan. That's, uh, mandated planning habits for this more tier one instruction, like what, what are you providing the kids, uh, in their classroom and the teachers? And our, ours is pretty old, but honestly, and the, the good news is that we identified this as part of this process and it's already being chipped away at, uh, revision to update it, modernize it and to align it now with our MTSS work in, uh, you know, S three work. So that will be a T V D in the future. We'll probably bring it up, that plan and show you the red marks where we improved it and changed it and updated it. We really haven't mentioned it to the community. It's not something we've been paying attention to, but through this work, we, we identified it as something that could be really helpful. So that's an exciting byproduct of this work as well. And then the future plans, go slow to go fast was our old COVID motto. Now it's slow and steady. Newly packaged, the, you know, continue this year too and expand it at Gates. It's going well. We want to expand it, do it, you know, smart and slow and with the support of our S three team. And, um, looking at the progress monitoring to identify student needs, we talked about that, to have purposeful meetings using this information and, um, applying it and then coming back and, you know, seeing if it works and why. And then the, I talked about the revision of the district accommodation plan and then next year, um, starting a, a small pilot at maybe one of the highest elementary schools or maybe all of them, we're still working on that, what that looks like. But to start branching out so that we eventually will have a K through twelve plan. And that will be achieving our strategic plan of having an MTS coordinated systemic, um, program placed to support the whole child of all our kids. And the next, um, so this is now getting into professional practice goal. So what's the superintendent doing to help self-improve and also leadership? And that's where the we comes from. I expanded this goal this year to talk a little bit more about what we're doing for our administrators. And would like to also expand this next year to include teachers, like what are we doing to support our teachers? So I'll get to that in a minute, but I want to give examples of what's happening for administrators, the cool things out there for them. And next page. So, um, I graduated from, proud graduate of the new superintendent induction program after three years. So, um, I moved on out of that, but, and I think this, well, I know Ms. Driscoll's, uh, graduated from the assistant superintendents program and will be starting, uh, the superintendent program next year. But we're proud too that she had participated in that. It's a great resource. It's provided with networking, coaching, professional development. And new this year that we jumped right on was the Mass Association of School Administrators, M S A A, started its, its first coaching program for administrators, um, consisting of, uh, networking, uh, individual coaching. I opened this up voluntarily for all our new administrators. Didn't tell them they had to take it. Just said, would you like this opportunity? Showed them the curriculum, showed them the program oversight and all four jumped on it and have given really positive feedback on it. In fact, one or two have already asked, can I do it again next year? That it's, that they've made a connection with their coach and they would like to continue that. So really powerful feedback, just things that, you know, and I'll share a weakness of mine. I just thought as a superintendent, I could be their coach. I've been a principal. I can be your coach, but I'm their evaluator as well. So it's just that it's not going to change, you know? So that's the reality of it. So I realized when this came up, it also lightened my load quite honestly a little bit with some of the headaches. So, you know, I got a little spoiled, but one of them would come to me and say, oh, I got a follow. I scored your coach. So I will, uh, if they go second year, I might use that. But that's, I think that's a really good program they started and, you know, I know a lot of the, um, you know, the, the coaches that they use and they're all respected administrators that are either currently in practice or retired. So we've got a good pool of people that are helping our current, um, new leaders develop into this model. So couldn't say enough about that program. An offshoot of that was, um, um, I wanted to get us all together and have a training and communication, as you know, is always going to be a goal to improve. It's ever changing. It's very important and we can always get better at it. Uh, again, another growth for me is that I thought, you know, that was a strength of mine and I, and I don't think it is, but it's also an area of improvement because it can always be done better. It's so important. So we got together and it was a good opportunity for me to sit with the principals and we had, um, Chris Iran come in. Chris is a nationally known, um, uh, communication. He did the job for a couple of the mayors. He's done it in small districts. Now he does, uh, consultancies and trainings. He's worked, he was at the M A S C, M A S S conference last year. Sveno and I were in there jammed in the room, packed. Uh, he sells art everywhere. He's just that good. Uh, so he came down and gave us a, you know, and we hope to follow up next year, part one. And it was just really powerful because it was practical. Let's, we, we went with real life examples of things that happened and how would we communicate that out to the community? That was really helpful for the principals and getting the feedback and for myself is let's practice some real life things. And Chris navigated us through as we worked in together and how we would do that. So more practices needed, so that will be ongoing, but I was proud of the fact that we initiated that this year. Um, and something I wanted to share with you all. We're working on that. Next slide. So me personally, um, now that I've graduated from NSIP, I had the opportunity to apply for, um, a national organization called Leading Now that works strictly with superintendents and professional development and connecting superintendents at the national level together to network, to offer professional development, development and coaching. Kind of a new superintendent action program two point O. I applied. I was accepted into the program and I'm very grateful for it. If everything was paid for, I was flown out to Atlanta in the fall to meet with twenty one, twenty two other superintendents from around the country, including some from Massachusetts. Uh, full day PD and then that group became a cohort and we had professional development, a lot of it around communication, which was great. And a thread that I've talked about from my own personal growth. Uh, but also with, um, some opportunity to network in between meetings. Now we've, I've expanded my bandwidth of connections and superintendents that I can go to with questions at the national level. Like we're doing this in Massachusetts. How are you all doing it, you know, in Georgia or wherever? So, um, made some connections there and I think that was the strength of the program. We did a lot of problems of practice where we, someone would share a real life problem. We'd navigate through how they dealt with it, how we could help them and support them and how we could do that at our own building. So just again, it's still going on to the end of the year. And now that I'm a member of that cohort, I'm a lifelong member and I can continue to participate in those opportunities. So I want to thank, uh, Leading Now for all their great work and it's just started in two thousand twenty one. And then Bridgewater State, we still have that strong partnership with Bridgewater State. I teach there, um, in the educational, um, department for future administrators. I've been there for like six years now. I absolutely love it. And they had me commit a keynote on leadership for inclusive education, which was marvelous. I talked about some of the great things happening in Citro, obviously bragging about what we're doing here. Also learned a lot from other educators in the room and, and future, uh, educational leaders. That was a great opportunity for me. And lastly, our partnership that I, uh, David mentioned tonight is Bridgewater State Partnership where our students can participate in opportunities. where our students can participate in opportunities at Bridgewater State, access student teachers from there, and we have professional development for our faculty there. So that continues to be, and we're one of a handful of districts that have that opportunity to be that, their partner, so that continues. I wanted to share that as well because we continue to grow in that partnership. And lastly, the district goal was the meeting all the timelines and benchmarks established by the MSBA for the new school building project. And quite honestly, the last two checkmarks were just added over the weekend after Saturday's vote and official today. I was sweating it out, like this whole goal came down to one thing. I put on my self-valuation TPD because I wanted to be honest that I really felt that although we achieved everything, the ultimate goal was to get to yes. And I'm very proud of this, it's probably the hardest and most challenging undertaking I've ever had as an educator. The amount of time and commitment and challenge to work with people, to communicate, to unify, to educate, to be transparent, to take tough questions, to take them in person, to bite your tongue sometimes and be professional, but to love it and to see that gym packed that night at special time meeting with people in support and people against to have healthy debate. I can't guarantee that on Facebook because I'm not on Facebook, but I think in person, in all the meetings I went to, and there were 30 something, and I want to thank the Butters who, you know, have a lot to possibly go through with this program, they showed up, they met with us, the community met with us in public meetings, there were some people that went to every meeting, I want to thank those people. And I also want to commit to those folks that voted for it or that were not yet ready to support it, that by the end of this, I want you to be happy and proud that we did it. And that's by earning your trust financially. My father always taught me, during some throwback times here, don't mess with people's money. Just remember that, always remember that, don't mess with people's money, this is taxpayers' hard money, it's a lot of money, but it's an opportunity to build something really special for the next 50 years for our children and our community. And I'm so excited to begin that process over the next weeks, months, and years to see this school open up in the fall. But I just wanted to give my thanks to the school committee for your endless hours of work on this, for evenings out, for sharing information out to the community and being there to support me and our team on this. And I also thank the school building committee, who again, were extremely committed volunteers in our community that were on the forefront of this, that will continue the work over the next three years. This project's been going on seven years, so I want to thank all the people that started it. I just picked the ball up and worked. So to me, this is the hardest thing but the most rewarding because I think it represents unity of a community. And I think if you look around in surrounding towns, there's a lot of stuff going on with overrides and stress and chaos and things like that. And we're really fortunate to be not only voting on it in addition to improve our community and our schools, but that we did so, you know, together in a very democratic and fair way. So you have my promise that the work will continue, it will be, continue to be transparent, we'll continue to meet with the public, we'll continue to take the tough questions, answer them, address them, and make sure that that, this is a product that the whole community can be proud of. And again, look back and say whether you supported it or not, that now I support it when I see it, this was the right call. That's the goal now. So I think that's. And then lastly, appreciate Dr. Kowski's patience because I had, she had a question that was related about math and I wanted to address it. So this is some of the cool stuff we talked about initially about already starting to think about goals for next year, knowing what we know. And all percentile rankings, that's an obvious one because ultimately all these things contribute to that, so we can't wait to share that and be open and honest about it and where we can improve that. It ties in with the accountability information there and our new target goals after we receive next year's information. Implementation assistance, secondary math resources, that's a lot of money that's going into those resources, we want to make sure that they're in the teacher's hands and they're being used, they're being trained properly and have that information. And then the secondary math benchmark data aligned with the ELA, that's a good question, Dr. Kowski was, okay, what's our plan for math? So that is next year's goal. We were able to, while we're working on this this year, turning our problem, we were able to help that department, so I think math will be certainly impacted positively manner with that goal next year, specific to math. And the next one is sustained ELA benchmarking, K to 12 and math K to five next year. So that's a goal for next year. Then the building project, obviously I mentioned that next phase because each phase is an aim, design and development is when we start getting into the real details of the building in the classrooms, we'll be involving the teachers again next week, start talking about that, getting them excited about what their vision is, what makes the best, greatest classroom to you. And I want to just jump back, because I almost forgot, because I segued into it, all those great things happening to support administrators. I'd like to see that, some type of coaching model, we'd be one of the first, and we're one of the first a lot of things, which is great, to help support our teachers. So stay tuned on that, I think that's, will be a goal next year too, is to, if not one of the main goals, is to, a goal, a personal goal of mine is to implement one of those coaching models for our teachers, because being done for administrators, don't know why it can't be done for our teachers, teacher leaders, we have a lot of them, I think it'll be an awesome opportunity and I'd love to take part in that. So that's in the works. And then technology department and restructuring, we put this on here because I noticed in the liaisons that Dr. Kowski had was on there as liaison, they had nothing to do. So we said, okay, we're going to give personal work. But this is exciting. But we're going to need your help, I think this is going to be, this is an exciting time for our very small technology department to not only expand it, but to, we just, we just, the committee just approved a new job description for the director of technology, educational technology, which has been expanded, that will be a quasi-central office position, very important, and to support that because we took a position away is we're adding another technology position that was proved in the budget process. We're doing that after we hire obviously the administrator and they can work with that committee and subcommittee on relooking at our job descriptions, looking at our structure, how the current program exists with the four people, will be five. So a lot of excitement there to kind of focus on that with new leadership and a new vision. It is part of our strategic plan as well to do that, so we'll hit that next year for sure. And lastly, review of the strategic plan. All these things are tethered into it, but it'll be nice at some point to have a presentation for you all about, you know, specifically where things are getting done and how they apply to the strategic plan so that we can show that we're on target for achieving. And we'll say after one year, feeling very confident that we've accomplished a lot on the strategic plan, we're on target to reach, you know, all those goals in five years, which will be plenty of time, but we want to do it well. So I think that's it. Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, so we will take our next steps with this. Final thoughts as we move to the next agenda item?
Yeah. Well, our, after we've been excessive, are we supposed to do like individual or do we just come from the parent?
So we do individual, but then it gets compiled, I'm going to compile it, Carrie offered to assist with that, so. Yes. I'll get the blank forms to you guys. Yeah. Yes, yeah, they're like blank and then, yeah, it's not a, we don't like the system, but we all sort of just do it. It's not great. All right. It's a little.
It's clunky, but the superintendent does most of the work, which helps us a lot, like because you're filling in so much.
Yeah, right. Yeah, and then we kind of compile and, you know, sort of.
We fill it out privately.
Correct. You'll fill it out, you send it to me. I'll compile, I think this is Carrie's, and then, yes, we'll share it out in public. And the compilation piece is sort of a, the form kind of prompts you to include a few sample feedback comments from, so we'll all, you know, there might be one indicator that we all commented on and Carrie and I will strategically select ones that, you know, and we, you know, try to distribute it evenly so that, you know, they won't, it won't say the name of the person who commented in the compilation piece, but you'll know what yours are, so we try to sort of make it even across the board for input amongst the five of us. So it's easy, it's just not, I don't know. I don't know what's wrong with it, it's just not, I don't like it. Sorry, Ms. Pika. They redid it too. I don't know. Gotten better, but it's. Yeah. But we will do what we need to do, work with it.
Help me.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I think when you drill it down, like that presentation helps us. More, personally, I find that your state of the district more helpful than the DESI form to.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's the goal, you.
Yeah. Exactly, we need context and that form is not. All right. So I'll get that over, the blank ones over to you ASAP because we don't have, we have a fairly tight timeline, with our next meeting being June 3rd. But I'll, when I send them it out, I'll be like, oh, can you just have it back to you by X date? All right, so.
So Bill, let's have me his, could we comment on his?
I think technically we're supposed to.
We comment on his form in our own form.
And he can have access, I believe, there's a component to it where he can request access to our individuals, you know what I mean? So he can request that. If there were any.
Certainly, yes.
Totally, but it's.
I would just say that, I won't, I trust, however you want to compile it, whatever you provide me, I trust, that's the feedback. And if, I think I might add, which is helpful to that, if, when you compile that, understanding that not every comment makes it, I'd be happy to hear that individual do it for me.
Okay.
Didn't make it, but I'd like you to work on this, I'd like to see more of that, you all have the opportunity to do that as well.
Yeah, that's a good point, so even after we compile and during our presentation, if there's a comment or even a new comment that you come up with, like feel free to throw it out there during our, our presentation. But a lot of times they are obviously similarly themed, so it sort of works out like this. Yeah.
No problem. Okay, old business, student handbook 2024, 2025. We have several.
Elementary, middle, and high school. Yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted to let you know that the elementary ones have been.
Okay.
The links were added that you asked for, now we're working on the middle and high school, so we will have that done for your request. It is a much better document to one that.
Fantastic. Take a motion on each of these.
It's recommended that the school committee vote to approve the elementary student handbook for 2024, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. It is recommended that the school committee vote to approve the middle school student handbook 2024, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye. It is recommended that the school committee vote to approve the high school student handbook for 2024, 2025.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Subcommittee update, policy subcommittee. Go for it. FAB. Ms. Van, Ms. Lindahl.
Yes. Okay, so we reviewed the life-threatening allergy policy and the documents, both the one and the new proposed one are in the folder. If I could summarize the updates, they were mostly about adding in some timelines, so for example, the board said like, you know, staff should be trained on this or the policy would be reviewed, but you can say how often those things would occur, so the new one adds in timelines saying like, staff can train on this every other year or something like that. We put it some consistent, or they put it some consistency of the terminology, so we have a district nurse leader, and so now that person is the one who's really in charge of updating the policy and doing the trainings, and so that person is referenced consistently throughout the policy. There were a lot of kind of like abbreviations that added needless specificity to the old policy, and so those have been replaced by slightly more general language, but that makes it kind of more evergreen. And I think those, to me, I don't know Janice, if you would add?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think that's everything, I think it was more like housekeeping stuff, we didn't actually change any of the policy.
Yeah.
It was just language and just to kind of streamline everything.
Yeah, so to me, it was a lot cleaner, easier to follow, yeah, easier to stay current.
Thank you, Kelly Bell.
Yes, absolutely.
And this follows the mask, this is a mask proposed.
I don't know if it's a mask proposed, I think it was, I think it really was just Kelly Bell going through it and saying like, here's what needs to be changed. I definitely didn't compare it to the mask policy because, not just to. She might have done that, I'm not sure if she did that as part of her review, yeah, I think she might have done that already.
Just curious once. We don't have to vote it, obviously.
Anyone else question?
All right, we have some May 6 minutes to approve.
I'm commencing to approve the May 6, 2024 minutes as presented.
Second. All in favor? All right, Dr. Raff, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have two horns this evening, I'm the first from April 18th for a total of $108,825.38. $53,752 of that is our budget and the remaining balance is the various grants and revolving accounts that we're also responsible for. And in addition, April 25th for $342,632.44, the majority of which was the teacher reimbursement that's part of our contract.
Questions, anyone? Great, thank you. Other business, or sorry, correspondences, none? Other business? None. Future agenda items? None. I mean, there's a lot, but. Okay, that's it, so take a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn at 7:54.
Second. All right, all in favor?